It is Wednesday, November 6th, 2019. We are in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. It is 5:31, and this is the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting. So Ms. Oden, would you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ohensy, not here. Mrs. Oden is the alternate, and I'm here. Ms. Fitzpatrick is here, Dr. McKinney is here, and we have Ms. Bastoni and Mr. Notig.
All right, excellent. Okay, so in curriculum, we always start with our favorite part, is the student spotlight. And that's the reason we're here, is for students. And so we like to hear the wonderful things that are going on in our schools. So Ms. Fitzpatrick, we have a secondary presentation today. Would you like to introduce everyone, please?
Certainly. As Mrs. Oden said, we have Mr. Notig, who is the teacher of this course, Dr. Bastoni, who is the CTE director for North, and a student who is taking the course, Lexi Hagen. And she's going to talk about it from a student perspective.
Fantastic. Thank you for having us. I just want to start by reminding everyone what robot algebra is. So in 2018, the Nashua School District received a grant for $50,000 to develop a course we called Robot Algebra. We worked with community college professors, experts in robots, experts in math, industry professionals, including Vex Robotics, Robomatter, and a team from Carnegie Mellon. We spent a year creating this curriculum, and we are piloting it this year. So far, we have 18 students in the class, and the feedback has been extremely positive. Students report liking the hands-on nature of the class. They like the stations, so they work in stations, and they like working with the robotics. The course was designed because we were concerned about the math scores across the state, so it's not unique to Nashua. Actually, it's not unique to the state. Across the country, math scores are stagnant. About 34% of students are reaching benchmarks, so we need to do something. So what we were hoping to do was combine the best parts of CTE and career exploration into a course that would give students Algebra I credit, and we're hopeful that we have done that. So 18 students signed up, and in fact, on November 12th and 13th, we have a team from Oregon traveling here to learn about robot algebra, because they want to bring it back to their state. Of course, the goal being to shift attitudes. Can we have a hands-on way of teaching algebra? Take these concepts, make them tangible, so that students can understand. An additional exciting next step is that we are working with a team to write and submit a National Science Foundation grant for $3 million over three years that would allow us to further align the curriculum between the robots and the math. And what we would then be able to do is roll this math, this curriculum, out to schools, 20 to 40 schools across the country would be able to use this curriculum. And then eventually, it will be free of charge and open to any school that would be interested in utilizing it. So that's kind of the rough history of robot algebra, and now I want to turn it over to Mr. Notig.
Thank you so much again for having us this evening. As Amanda Bastoni had just mentioned, we've been working on this program and project for more than a year in collaboration with industry partners and people throughout both this state and other states as well. I had just finished my master's program. I'm very excited. And part of the practicum portion of it, we decided to investigate the feasibility of this study. And so in collaboration with Dan LaGro, who is a certified math teacher in the math department here at Nashua North, we investigated over two dozen scholarly articles and research articles on experts from around the globe as to the feasibility of conducting a program where we utilize robots as a non-traditional approach to teaching algebra. And what we found by triangulating our research is that by utilizing a variety of instructional strategies through hands-on, career-relevant lessons and activities, students will not only improve their performance, but also improve their attitudes towards math as well. And that has been our primary driving force behind the development of this course. And so at this point, we've just completed the first quarter of the program. And our main development throughout the, through the beginning of the school year, we've been focusing on building culture. And so we dubbed this Unit Zero. And this whole core, this whole unit was really to develop, you know, the mindsets of our students, to take their attitudes and beliefs and take that into consideration, and to help create student autonomy. And so as you can see here up on the screen, we developed a bunch of activities to help engage the students as part of that process. And some of those activities included a Lego Building Challenge, establishing classroom norms, student-based, and also having the students work collaboratively with each other. And here to speak again from a student's perspective is Lexi Hagen.
Yeah, and I think, as Chris was saying, one of the big goals of robot algebra is to answer that question that students always have in math class, when am I ever going to use this in real life? And so we want them to not need to ask that question, because the class will make the math so relevant. All right, Lexi, you ready? Okay. So Lexi, we did, to build culture, we did a Lego Building Challenge. Can you explain what that challenge was, and maybe what your big takeaways were?
The Lego Building Challenge was where we used different communication skills, and we told each other how we built something, and we wanted them to rebuild it with all the same parts that we had. And everyone's on a different communication level, so in order to get the same thing, we have to see who's on the same level as we are, and everyone's on a different level. No one will ever get the same thing. But it's fun to see what we all come up with and what our imagination can take us through with different instructions.
Great job, Lexi. Okay, so we, to build culture, we also engaged in creating classroom norms. So could you talk about why you think we spent time building norms with the students?
As a student, or as a teenager in general, we don't like to be told what to do. We like to figure things out on our own and be an adult, and to get the opportunity to make our own rules and expectations for ourselves. It's more likely for us to follow them than for us to get told what we're supposed to do, even though we know what we're supposed to do, because we've been hearing it throughout our whole school life.
Very good, Lexi. Another big piece of robot algebra is collaboration. We focus on having the students give presentations and learn to talk about math and math concepts. This is very unusual for the students. Lexi told me she's only given a presentation in math one other time. So, Lexi, after every unit, we give these presentations. Why do you think we do that, and what has that taught you?
The collaboration part in the presentation, the collaboration definitely helps us with being able to work with other people and solving problems on our own that we have with a different person, and gives us a lot of life skills. And then the presentation, it teaches us to be more comfortable speaking in front of different people and, like, voicing our own opinions about different topics, even if we all have a different one. We can all come to an agreement that this is that, and...
Perfect. Good. Okay, so Lexi, these two photos show students engaging with the robots. Can you tell us what's happening in these pictures?
To the photo on the left, that's us practicing for our tournament, where we had the blocks stacked up on top of each other in certain order. And then each team is assigned a different color, and we had to take those colored blocks and bring it to one side of the board, which was our side, and we had to put them in a certain spot depending on, like, the black lines that are on the board. And like, they couldn't be touching each other, or if they were stacked, it was more than one point. Like, the value doubled. And then on the right, that's us building our robots, which is a very good, like, hands-on activity to learn what the robots are and how each part, like, works.
Good. Great. So finally, Lexi, can you tell me why you wanted to sign, or tell us why you wanted to sign up for robot algebra, and then how is it going for you so far?
I wanted to sign up for robot algebra because I've never heard of a course like this before, and I thought it would be new and interesting, also because I don't really like to stay in one spot. I like to move around a lot. And in a regular class environment, you don't really get much of that time. You have to stay in the same spot for the hour and 20 minutes that we're in class. So this helps us be able to stay focused and stay on task.
And then how is it going for you so far, Lexi, and maybe what do you like about it?
I think robot algebra is going very well for me so far. I like that we get to move around and get to sit with our friends. I also like how all of the students in our class are all from the same middle school, so it wasn't really a big jump, like, trying to make new friends. It was more of just trying to build off of the friendships we already had. We get to, like, work with the friends that we did have, and we get to build more relationships with one that we might not have been friends with before, but now we're all, like, completely friends, and we get to work really comfortably with each other.
Perfect. So I'm going, should we say, you want to say thank you, and then I'll close us?
Yes. So once again, we are extremely excited to offer this new innovative course where we're able to create a, an environment of trust and student autonomy, and really, the whole course is really student-driven. So we take their feedback into consideration, and we adapt as necessary. And so we're really excited with how things have gone thus far, and we're really looking forward to seeing how it plays out for the rest of the year. So again, thank you, everyone, so much for offering us this opportunity. I know Dr. Bastoni would like to add some closing comments.
Perfect. So thank you again for supporting innovation. I think it's really, really impressive that the Nashua School District is doing this project, because, I mean, it is honored, it is worthwhile to be a National Science Foundation project because of the work that Nashua has agreed to allow students and teachers like Mr. Notig to do. So I think, just really take pride in the fact that this is an innovative project that you are spearheading. And in closing, I just want to say, we're hoping that this will begin to break down that dichotomy between CTE and academic classes, because we will have embedded some core credits into tech ed or CTE classes. Or conversely, if a math teacher were to teach it, they would be teaching about careers and CTE, so it could become a feeder for CTE. So it's a really nice synergy. So thank you, everyone. Any questions?
Anybody have questions or comments? No. Mrs. Oden.
I have a comment for Lexi. You seem very comfortable presenting and answering questions and explaining to us, and thank you so very much for giving up your evening time to spend with us and to educate us. Thank you.
She was a little...
She did well.
Didn't show.
No. And so we're just so proud of our teachers, our faculty, our students, and all of the great things that are going on here. So thank you so much for coming and sharing. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are we going to have motions tonight?
Mm-hmm. They're written down.
We can cut them over.
You can.
Put them in here.
Sure. Okay, we're doing a little change in the guard here. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Aren't we doing the, yeah, yeah.
Are you using the table play?
They are going to project.
Aren't we doing the scope and sequence?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Next, we have science updates from the elementary and middle school level, so I'd like to invite Ms. Monica Tino and Dr. Lisa Genesekup, and they're going to share science updates, K to eight.
There we go. Now, now I have the green light. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you, to update you on elementary and secondary science. We're going to go over the K-5 scope and sequence, some curriculum work that was done just before school opened today. It is NGSS-aligned. Monica will be speaking to the elementary science pilot, and we will be giving an update on the implementation of Amplify as well. So tomorrow night is actually conference night for our middle school teachers, so I do have some middle school teachers here to speak about the implementation of Amplify, just sort of a short little piece to give you a little more information. And I thought that I would have them speak first, so that they could go home, since they will have a late evening tomorrow night with conferences. We were going to have Mark Allard representing sixth grade at Fairgrounds. He was unable to attend, so Sue Rouse was willing to come and present what he had written down. We have Arvila Mastromarino from seventh grade PMS, and we have Linda Lennon, an eighth-grade teacher from EMS. Sue, would you like to come and...
Can you do it over here?
Yep.
Are you not lonely anymore?
You know, I've felt so alone.
No.
Good afternoon. My friend and colleague, Mark Allard, could not be here tonight, and asked me to read his thoughts on Amplify. Dear members of the board, as a sixth-grade teacher at Fairgrounds Middle School, I wanted to communicate some of the successes and challenges associated with the implementation of our Amplify science curriculum. To date, I have found this program to be well-thought-out and largely effective in promoting a deeper understanding of science concepts in my classroom. As we change the way we deliver instruction in order to meet the next-generation science standards, this seems to be a high-quality resource. It is layered in a way that gives my students repeated exposure to content that is embedded in many application-based activities. Amplify is very easy to follow, and I feel that it is user-friendly to both the students and teachers. Some of the biggest challenges come solely from a shortage of Chromebooks for a one-to-one student use. This program is designed to be used in a classroom setting where each student can access their accounts daily. My students and I have found it hard to jump from paper to the digital platform while still utilizing all of the great aspects of the program. It is also difficult to always be looking ahead at various technology calendars in hopes of signing out carts for student use. Prepping for the program has been good, and I can only anticipate it improving with a year under my belt. Thanks so much for listening to this update. Sincerely, Mark Allard.
Yep.
Arvila Mastromarino, seventh grade science at Penachuk Middle. I was really excited when Amplify was accepted or implemented. I have used their curriculum and piloted it for a number of years in my other teaching positions. This is my second career. I spent 14 years in laboratory research, so science is a passion of mine and helping students understand it. And so I was so excited about this program. It has very high reputation. It's research-based, which is important to me, and so I had very high expectations. We, since it is the first year, we are having some challenges, but we're also finding successes, as Mark noted. The challenge with the lack of Chromebooks, there are some times that I can't get Chromebooks. And the simulations on this are so marvelous and really so important for student understanding. We can't, for instance, we're using metabolism now. I can't open up a body and have the students see how the particles break up and where they travel. So to find an alternative for some of these is, is difficult. I did try copying the workbooks, but I could only copy 10 at a time before the copy machine overheated. So I went back to using my interactive notebook, which has been helpful, because some of my students don't have access to Internet at home. So this allows them to have the information they need. In addition, it uses a whole lot less paper. So the prep has been intensive, but it will be well worth it. I love the storylines. They're very current. They're using current research, current topics. For instance, we just finished talking about fecal transplants and the microbiome. If you've had middle school students, you know they like gross things.
They do.
This, this works out well, and they can't say, what am I going to use this for later? The challenge that I'm finding here is that some of the reading that they have the students do is high above their reading ability, so I've had to modify it slightly. I also have a large number of ESL students who don't speak English, and although the program does provide Spanish translation, many of my students don't speak Spanish either. So there's a modification that needs to be made there, so that I can have more hands-on manipulatives, so they can be involved. That's very important to me. The students are reluctantly and slowly learning to find evidence to support their claims, which is something I emphasize to them, they're going to need to use in their daily lives. They use with their parents and social situations. And I really appreciate how Amplify is taking it step by step and building on it with each unit. The students aren't very happy about it, but it's, it's really coming together for them. I appreciate the support the company gives to the teachers. There's a little place to click on the screen if you have a problem while teaching, and they get back to you very quickly. There's a Facebook group that has been helpful, because that just widens the whole group of teachers that I can interact with across the country. The training meetings were helpful. My coach has come in and helped me teach a class, which helped me get some new perspectives on things. So in conclusion, I'm looking forward to amplifying Amplify, and would be very grateful for more Chromebooks. That would just lower the stress level many, many, many times. Thank you.
I have a...
Thank you. Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You can go first.
Okay. You have a shortage of Chromebooks. Do you know the percentage of Chromebooks that you are short of?
Well, we have a number of carts that can be checked out at the school, but if there's testing going on, you can't check out any Chromebooks, because they're all being implemented for testing. So that takes a number of months out of the school year. And I can sign out a cart for a week, but then it has to go to other people, and I may or may not be able to, to get another one back. And I can't share it with my colleague, the other seventh-grade teacher, because she needs them at the same time. So it's that dance of computers that you do. Yes.
Are sixth grades, I'm sorry, are sixth grades using this program too? So they would need Chromebooks, and eighth grade would need. How many Chromebooks is that for Penachuk?
Well, let's see. 120 times six?
30.
Oh, yeah, 30 per class, yeah.
They do suggest for simulations that a two-to-one ratio works well. Certainly, if there's the end-of-unit test that goes on, you would need a Chromebook for each individual student, but a set of 15 would be able to meet the needs for the simulation piece. And there are six teachers at Penachuk, six science teachers.
So six times 15? Or is it 180 students divided by two, if two are on a Chromebook?
Now we have to do math.
Well, that's 90.
Right. In each class, it would probably be about 25 students. So it could be a two-to-one ratio.
And do you use them every day?
Can I answer that?
Yeah. Wait, you have to go to a microphone.
You need to come up to a microphone.
Come to any microphone on my side.
Join us.
Join us, please. I'll cut this after. I have. Nope. Sorry. What's wrong?
I currently teach eighth grade at Fairgrounds, but I have taught all three grades. If I had Chromebooks every day, I would use them every day. The problem with only doing a set of 15 for each classroom means that, yes, kids can look together on the simulation, but there are also questions and other things that if one student gets to answer it, then they have to flip to the other student's account. So ideally, what we would really like is a set of Chromebooks for each science teacher, or, and I think it would be less expensive, to do one-to-one computing. So each of our middle school students had a Chromebook, and that way, when I have two planned periods, my Chromebook cart is just sitting there. But if the students each had a Chromebook, then it would be being used every single period of the day. And I don't know the numbers for that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Trying to figure this out.
Mrs. Raymond? I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I know that Amplify came from the Common Core, from, from back when Rupert Murdoch was getting into data. So I do know that they, they need an awful lot of technology, because wireless generation who, the company Amplify was built on, was just a technology company with lots of data in it, so I'm not surprised that we need these. So certainly, we are getting some money from the state, and hopefully, we can use some of this money to get some of the tools that our students need. So thank you. That's why I was asking about it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Raymond?
Oh, thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions related to that, and I also want to hear the eighth grade feedback. But my first question is, is there a way to project the simulations? I know a lot of the teachers have, like, the document readers. That's not what I'm thinking. Is there a way to connect?
I can address that.
To, like, put it up on the whiteboard or something?
There is, but when, for instance, with our metabolism unit, the students are supposed to break up and divide and analyze different scenarios all at the same time. And then sixth grade, I know in, at PMS, they're having to do ramps and speed and things, and they're having the kids switch variables. And to have it just do one variable at a time in the front of the room, you would lose...
Right, that sounds very boring.
Yeah, you would lose the rest of the class, so...
And so I guess my other question, then, is related to data usage and our Wi-Fi capabilities for the schools. Because I know, so my disclosure, my son's a sixth grader at Elm Street, and he likes to come home and log into his account and show us some of the simulations that he's done. He particularly likes, like, the pollution ones, where he can show how we're all going to die. Those are his favorite. So that's super fun for everyone. But even when he does that, we find that internally, our own, like, home Wi-Fi, if everybody in my house is on a device at the same time, like, it doesn't run as well as he would like it to. And that's my... And that's my issue at my house. But I'm wondering, do we have a similar issue at the schools? Like, here, sometimes you can't get on the Wi-Fi. Does that happen at the middle schools? I'm going to guess yes at Elm Street because it's ancient, but...
I can answer for Fairgrounds. We recently had more hubs added. And I would say in prior years, yes, that was an issue. But I haven't heard of anyone complaining about it this year. It seems to go smoothly in our testing. I-ready testing went pretty smoothly.
And as for Elm, I have, we don't have any problems in the morning, but for some reason, in the afternoon, it slows way down. So like, from between 1:00 and 2:30, that's when we seem to come up with some problems. But I haven't heard a lot of complaints about that here and there, more spotty than a daily occurrence. So I think it kind of depends on what's going on in the school at the time. So the other thing I'd just, I'd like to add regarding Chromebooks is the problem we're having at Elm Street is that each team has their own set of Chromebooks. And but we're competing with StudySync as well as, you know, the Amplify as well. And StudySync, there's a lot of writing. So the English teachers are using it quite a bit, the team ones, for the writing. And because Amplify is kind of spotty when you need it, it's very difficult to schedule with your teammates when you can use it.
Okay. Are you, do you have a presentation?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, well, they hit all the positive points about Amplify. So I'm not going to repeat that. But I want to talk about a success that I had personally at Elm Street regarding the Amplify Mars unit. So on a lovely Tuesday afternoon, right after lunch, I get my foundations class of 20, 25 kids. And Mr. Atwell decided to come and observe me. And he walks in, I'm like, oh, great. Your timing couldn't be any more perfect, sarcastically. But anyways, so the conversation we were having is, the warm-up was making a claim on whether this channel in Mars was created by either lava or water. And so the warm-up, they have you pick which claim you think is correct and explain why. So the children in the class, they're not the best writers. They can't express themselves well writ in writing. However, verbally, they can tell you a lot. So they didn't get a lot written down. However, when you have, it has you take a poll on who thinks what. And it was just, this experience I've never had before. It was unbelievable. So I took a poll, and half the class said water. The other half the class said lava. And Mr. Atwell said, oh, it's lava. And the other half of the class just got up and ready to debate them. And they came up, I thought they weren't listening for the past week. Well, let me tell you. They had their facts. They said, well, we did this model to show this would happen. Look at the picture I made of this model. And they were, like, pulling out evidence out of their notebook. It was the most phenomenal thing I've ever seen. So it was like, wow. I really thought they were, like, just kind of in their own la-la land for the past week when we did the... You know, they'd go through the motions. However, they really, really were able to put it all together and defend. So provide evidence, reason why they thought that. It was, like, amazing. So I was so proud of them. And Mr. Atwell was, like, so surprised on how well they could put everything together, explain themselves. So that was just, like, unbelievable. And something, and a similar thing happened today, not so profound as the first time, but they really did a nice job today with the same thing for the next unit. So that's just a success story that I'll remember for a long time. And I've been teaching a long time, so this is, it's pretty profound. So, you know, we talked about the Chromebooks and stuff. So one of the concerns we have at Elm Street is, so as you know, Elm Street is not the coolest building in the district. And our photocopies are under a lot of stress. First of all, there's 93 teachers, three photocopiers, on a good day. And we're also competing with the Rika math teachers. So I get into work very, very early, and there's four or five math teachers running off their lessons for the day, which is sometimes six or seven pages per kid, times 100. So those machines are just constantly running and running. And so because of, you know, the kids keep a student notebook, which is like worksheets and stuff, we have to make a choice at Elm Street whether to, some teachers have turned to, like, having binders of the notebook for their students. So like, and then they write the answers in their own personal binder. So if there's a warm-up exercise, they share it with their table buddy, and then they write it on lined paper or in the notebook, which is okay, probably for the eighth graders. But sixth and seventh, that executive functioning and the other issues with kiddos with the challenges and stuff are just, is very difficult. So if a teacher wants to run off the whole student notebook, it's about 100 pages per unit, give or take a few, and then times 100 kids. So, and that's a lot of running off, a lot of time and such. So our machines are breaking down at Elm, September and October. The secretary told me that the repairman was in there weekly, sometimes two, three times a week. The room is between 80 and 90 degrees. So those machines overheat. And with all that running off, it's, they take a beating. And right now, they're not making quality printouts. And I just happened to grab some leftover math from this morning, and there's, like, sections of the top that get cut off. And, you know, so we're kind of, like, trying to piecemeal it and whatever to make up for that. So that's a big, big concern and a challenge we're having at Elm Street is the photocopying and the time. But more importantly, the machines and how they just pass their time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before I have my comments, does anybody else have Mrs. Raymond?
I just need to know who was right on the water versus lava.
Oh. Well, to be honest, what was neat is I didn't know the answer till the very end either. And the kid's like, you must know the answer. I'm like, no, I don't. It is wa, oh, no, I'm not going to say.
Oh. But the important thing, though, is that everybody backed up their side.
Yes, and actually, Amplify, what it did is they felt it was one more than the other. It was okay, as long as you could back up your evidence, even though it might have been incorrect. They had to, as long as they could back up their evidence and reason it, it was okay.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I know unrelated, but it was really driving me crazy.
All the kids are listening for the answer. Okay. I don't know if you want to head out now, and we can continue talking. So do you want to come back? Because I have some addition, because I do have some additional questions and comments.
Yeah, there will be a time for questions after we do...
For middle school, too?
Yep, for the middle school, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies, for coming and representing your schools and your grade levels. I appreciate it.
And good luck with conferences.
Thank you.
I don't know what's going on with the lights. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right. Okay, go ahead.
So we're going to continue with the curriculum work that we did just before the beginning of school. I just want to make sure I had them in the right order here. This is the document that a group of teachers had gotten together to do. The curriculum team was made up of elementary school teachers. We originally had hoped that we would get one representative from each school, but it being summertime and just before school opened, I thought that we did very well. We actually had five teachers, five to one? Six teachers. Five schools were represented. Two title schools and three of the other schools were represented. We had kindergarten and third and fourth grade represented. So it was a wonderful group to work with. I would love to work with them again. Monica was there to support us. They really did amazing work. We had four hours. We pretty much overloaded them with a lot of information, gave them the previous scope and sequence that we had that was aligned to our old standards. And within those four hours, created the document that was up there. That's actually a living document. Each of those is a link that goes to the standards where a teacher can click on it, and it gives them far more information. I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. Like, the links don't want to work. Okay. Well, I can get those to you if you would like. When you do click on them, it opens up and it gives all the content standards. Down below, it has the cross-cutting concepts for each of them. If you think about it, each of those links is another document that, within those four hours, they put together those documents as well as the scope and sequence. It is NGSS-aligned. The biggest differences, I would say, is if you notice, it's written in the same format as the previous scope and sequence. Along the left-hand side are your science domains of life science, earth science, and physical science. As you go across, you'll notice that kindergarten, first grade, and second grade each have three units. A major difference is that for third, fourth, and fifth grade, they actually have four units for the year. That would be the biggest difference. And then the topics were the same as the previous scope and sequence. A few of them just got juggled around from grade level to grade level. Other than that, this is very similar.
Can I just point out in your packets, if you look at the scope and sequence, the first one under kindergarten for life science, interdependent relationships and ecosystems, the links that you see up there, you have an example of what it would look like on the back. And this is, I also brought a complete copy of the whole document. If you wanted to see it, I could pass it around or make it available at the end.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Oh, I know why it didn't work. So this is what Dr. McKinney was speaking to. It gives the performance expectations or what the student should be able to do by the end of the unit. And it actually gives the content standards below. And there's one of those for each. Another example, at the bottom of the scope and sequence, we have the cross-cutting concepts, which are those big-picture ideas that it doesn't matter which domain of science that you are investigating. These are lenses in which you can view that topic through. An example would be patterns or cause and effect. It doesn't matter if you're doing physical science, life science, or earth science. Those concepts go across all domains. And as I said before, this is our team. I believe we had Amherst Street, Bicentennial, Ledge, Charlotte Ave, and New Surles represented here. To make a connection to the middle school scope and sequence, this year with the rollout of Amplify, we're following the domain model because that is the model that we were previously using. And we're using the scope and sequence suggested by Amplify, physical science being in sixth grade, life science being in seventh, and earth science being in eighth. As before the review of this resource happened, we actually married it up against the next-gen science standards. And it was absolutely perfectly aligned. So our next steps would be to establish a middle school curriculum team to actually create district documents that would look very similar to the elementary document that you just had the chance to see. Are there any questions about the K-5 scope and sequence?
I have a question. So I'm going to kind of go backwards. It's from middle school. That's going to apply to the question for this. So there were teachers who saw that this was on the agenda for tonight. So I did get some input. And I just want to kind of bring some of those things forward. And before I say that, I just want to say that we're happy to have Amplify. And the purpose of bringing these questions up is to be successful because we want it to be successful for kids. So as a retired teacher, and I've been in Nashua many years, and Mrs. Oden can attest to this, too, I just want to be very careful that when teachers bring concerns forward, I know that, and I haven't worked for any of the administrators we have today, so I'm going off of history. But I know in the past, many times, it's categorized as complaining. I'm not saying that that's happening now. My caution is, is that is not happening, that teachers are able to just give honest feedback. And I'm hoping that we have safe spaces for them to do that so that when they have concerns, it comes out of a real genuine place for wanting to do the right thing and the best thing. So when I bring these, that's the spirit that I want to do this. I know that Dr. McKinney is probably tired of hearing me refer always back to the strategic plan, but I'm going to do that. I have a lot of papers here. So I just want to, you know, just refer back that our second goal is to cultivate a safe and nurturing learning and working environment. And that's up to us as board members to do. That's up to everybody who works here to do. So just, that's the spirit in which I'm bringing these things forward. Okay. So I know that when I was working, we had, these were on X2, the scope and sequence that we're doing. So I did have some teachers with a little bit of concern that we're trying to match the UBD units here with the Amplify science units so that some of the topics that are in the grade eight are actually in grade six on here. Some of the topics that are in grade seven for Amplify are eighth grade on this scope and sequence. And some of the topics that are grade six for Amplify are seventh grade on here. So I'm just wondering if what's happening is there... I know that these units, I think what I was told is that some of these units are, so say, I'm doing harnessing human energy, which Amplify says is a grade eight unit, but it's being done in grade six because it matches up onto here. Is that what's happening?
Well, actually, they have two scope and sequences. Some districts do an integrated model, which means students get physical science, life science, and earth science at each grade level. And it actually spirals up, and it's a building of understanding. For as long as I can remember, Nashua has been domain-specific. And Amplify also meets the needs of those districts that are domain-specific. So if we're doing physical science in sixth grade, then the units are in order in sixth grade and are all physical science. So I think the sheet that you have showed an integrated model. Because harnessing human energy is a physical science unit. But in the integrated model, Amplify has it in eighth grade.
Okay. So what I'm assuming here that's happening is a grade six unit is written, let's say, developmentally and academically for a sixth grader. Seventh grade Amplify, academically and developmentally for a seventh grader. And eighth grade, academically and developmentally for an eighth grader. And I'm imagining that these are growing. So as I would think, each grade, it gets a little bit more challenging and rigorous. So if you're taking an eighth grade unit because it's life science? What did you say, physical science?
Yes, sixth grade is physical.
So you're putting it in there. This was written for an eighth grade student, but is it being taught in sixth grade?
It is being taught in sixth grade. When you actually look at the articles that go with the units, they're very similar. Whether it's harnessing human energy, or metabolism, or the geology on Mars. I believe some of the teachers had asked about a Lexile score because there isn't one that is written on there. But it's more of, you should be able to take that reading and use the strategies and educational pieces to help the students understand it. The articles are generally only one to two pages long.
Right, but complexity of text and understanding, it doesn't really matter how long it is. It's how difficult the text is.
Right, and they're all written about at the same level. At least my understanding was.
We had, one of the comments tonight was that it was a little difficult and that she had to.
That was a life science unit. It was seventh grade. It was a little heavy. It was a shorter unit. Some of the teachers just broke it down into pieces as they did it with their students. And I think because it was life science, I think it was just a little heavy on some of the nomenclature that was in there.
And I think that if we take that for ELL students and special ed students, that's quite a bit of change that has to be made to that article to be accessible to all of the students. So I guess, I guess what I would like as a follow-up is just to know how these units are being, what grade they're being taught in and to just kind of address those things. Because I would imagine, as the complexity grows and the length of the thing gets, it's not just an easy thing of matching these units to when we're teaching in the different grade levels. If we've adopted this program, it seems that we should be following the grade levels because I assume this is next-gen aligned.
It is next-gen aligned, so that.
So I'm just wondering, these UBD units were written a while ago, I would say. The date on the bottom of here is 2015. So does this need to be updated to kind of go with our Amplify program?
It needs to be updated, whether we have the Amplify program or not. And at the end of the K-5 scope and sequence, that's where we would get another team, a curriculum team together for middle school to do that. The units are written towards the six to eight grade span.
That's huge.
Because the science standards are six to eight grade span. I'm not sure if that helps in any way. I do think that the document that you do have there shows the integrated model. And Amplify supports both, doing the domain and the integrated model. And as far as my understanding goes, and I can check with Amplify about this so you can have what you're looking for, for the answer, is that the reading level of the units is pretty much the same across the board.
That's not the feedback I get. I'm not challenging you.
No, that's fine.
We're in the context of a safe space to just have all concerns met because we want students to be successful. I think that that's something to look at. And I'm just, as I'm thinking now, it just seems that we're kind of doing a round peg in a square hole that this document should have been maybe looked at before we started to fit these units in. I just want to be sure that these are developmentally and academically appropriate for the length of the assessments, the reading level, the accessibility. Given that we have such a diverse student body, we want to make it as acceptable, accessible as possible. And I'm just wondering, just wondering, should we be following the scope and sequence here that was for Amplify as opposed to this right now and while we're working on that? Because I think that teachers have been told to follow this program with fidelity, and I think that they're trying. I'm concerned that we have such a big issue with Chromebook carts right now. And I'm concerned that we went ahead and got the, I know that Mrs. Raymond and I were on that pilot committee. And I don't think I understood that we really needed a Chromebook cart for each science class. And I think that, and you know, Mrs. Oden can attest, I think that trying to do a science program with fidelity, not having those Chromebook carts is a lot to ask right now. So I wonder if in the meantime, because we do have some money, we could be looking into this. If that, if teachers could maybe have some time to just explore the program, kind of feel their way around with it, get used to it, kind of really kind of work out some kinks while we try to get the support that they need. It sounds like they need workbooks. I know that I've heard several comments about wanting the teacher guide. I think with, you know, the issues with the printers at school, the issues with trying to sign out and share Chromebooks, those sound like really fundamental issues to the success of this program. And I think that it would be a lot to ask teachers right now to try to follow it with fidelity while as a board, we're trying to work those financial pieces out to get them those things that they need.
So there is a little bit more after the elementary pilot that goes into Amplify itself, the actual update piece of it. I think possibly, I'm glad that the teachers had the opportunity to share. I was going to have them share during that other part, but I didn't want them to stay as long.
Absolutely.
So certainly, I think some of the concerns you've mentioned, I can go over then. But I will absolutely find out the information that you're looking for. That being said, I have also heard some teachers feel that the reading is too difficult. I've heard that they feel that it is not difficult enough. And that's not a matter of sixth grade saying that it's too difficult and eighth grade saying that it's too easy. So there is that piece. But if we could continue with this, we'll do the update with the elementary pilot. And then.
So I guess I brought that up because we're here to approve this scope and sequence, which is a Nashua one.
Okay.
The elementary one. And so those concerns that I had about those two documents matching was my illustration to come back to this one because we're doing, so I kind of have a point.
No, that's fine.
All right. So just coming back, if we're looking at piloting Mystery Science and Amplify in the elementary level, do we know that this scope and sequence will fit in with that same? Because I imagine that we'll have a similar document for elementary school. And I just, I know that those UBD units were made when we didn't have that resource. I just want to make sure that it matches. And how is that going to happen? If we adopt this now and then we get a science program, are we going to come back to this? I guess that's my question. Thank you.
So what we've done with that document is that we've looked at the next-gen science standards. And in K-5, the next-gen science standards are very specific for what's to be learned in kindergarten and first grade, second grade. Whereas in middle school, it's a grade span, six to eight. So we've looked at that part of it. So any resource that we pilot or that we ultimately approve, I hope would be aligned to the next-gen science standards, which means that they would be aligned to this scope and sequence.
So part of the pilot process, because I know you always have a rubric and a pilot process, and that's a great thing. So would one of the indicators on choosing a thing be to look at the resource and see how it lines up with this? Like as a specific question? So we would know that before we adopted a new resource?
Yes.
Okay, that would be great. Was that done for middle school?
Could I just add a comment to the middle school?
Absolutely, yep.
So with this new next-gen science standards and this new pedagogy of teaching science, what's so great about it is that it's accessible to all students. So when you look at, you know, teaching the whole child and what we're all about here in Nashua, this is what the next-gen science standards, it's all about. It's about reaching every student. And teaching this way is just, it's amazingly gratifying as the teacher to be able to reach all of these students that in years past you hadn't. You know, Linda's story was so wonderful. So when you look at something that goes from six to eight, could I teach an eighth grade unit and sixth grade? I sure could because it's looking at the whole child and how they access the information. And it's so student-driven that something that is appropriate for a sixth grader could be appropriate for an eighth grader. I hope I'm explaining this to you. So as an eighth grader, they might be learning it a little bit different because they're more sophisticated, they have more experience. But they're coming to the same conclusion. So a sixth grader can still have that debate about it being lava or it being water. But in their reasoning and their writing might not look like an eighth grader's writing, but they can still access that curriculum. And that's what's so amazing about this new pedagogy and this new way that we're teaching science. I hope that kind of.
No, I'm all for that. I guess I'm just, so are you saying that a unit that was written for eighth grade, an assessment that went with that unit for eighth grade could be modified so that they, a sixth grader could take that same assessment?
So you're missing a document. So there are two documents from Amplify. One shows that scope and sequence. The other one shows the scope and sequence domain style, which matches the Nashua school district. So when the, I believe, and you know, I don't work for Amplify, so I'm not sure. But I believe that when this, when those units were written, they were written for a six to eight student. They were written for a middle school student to, for the student, for any sixth, seventh, or eighth grader to be able to access that information. And like I said, with this pedagogy, you can act, they can access it. They're written, they're, what they come out with, it might be different, but they can access this information. So my understanding is that these were written for a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade student. And that's why Amplify is able to say, okay, you're a school district that uses domain, here you go. This is, so when we get our, when we look on our Amplify accounts and we look at seventh grade, we see all the life science units. Somebody in another school district will look at seventh grade and see totally different units. So it's actually, we're not pasting together things in Nashua. Amplify has actually laid it out this way.
So I know in some language arts thing, materials that we have, you might have one text written at three different levels. Is that something that Amplify has? Something similar to that so that teachers are not trying to modify?
Amplify is really great about using reading strategies for students. So for example, in the first couple of units, they build, they build that up. So they teach the kids how to note what they're reading. They have a dictionary, they can look up words. And so, you know, they slowly get to be able to do that. They also have a read aloud. One of the things that I did when I was using this in class was I had all varying different, you know, reading levels, obviously, in my class. It was heterogeneously grouped. I pressed the play button and it read it to the students. So they were able to read it on their own. They were able, they were, it was read to them by a really nice recording, not my voice. And so there are a lot of places in there. And sometimes it's, they don't need to access all of the information in the article. So where some kids can take more out of it and.
So they would need to have a Chromebook to be able to do that?
Right.
Okay.
Unless you, unless you do it projected.
Okay. Okay, so we'll come back to this later. Okay, I appreciate you clarifying because again, we just want everyone to be successful. We want all the teachers to feel comfortable with it. And I know that when you get a new resource, it's a lot. Especially given, you know, that they don't have the Chromebooks. They're forced to make lots of copies. They're in competition with the other subject areas for those resources, which we don't want to be setting teachers against each other for, you know, computers and copy machines and paper and toner. Okay, so if you want to continue, I'll save my other comments for later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Here you go.
Okay, currently in elementary school right now, we have nineteen teachers piloting Mystery Science. Although all teachers have access to an account and many, many teachers are utilizing it, whether it's just for a lesson here or there where they're teaching an entire unit out of Mystery Science. What we'd like to do is to broaden our search a little bit because they are using Amplify in the middle schools. We'd like to look at Amplify Science at the elementary level. Also PhD Science, which is a great minds, the makers of Eureka. They also have a really good reputation for their science program as well. We also have an opportunity to work with some elementary science coaches in the Salem School District. I started my connection with them when Lisa and I went there to facilitate the NGSS training to them. And they kind of reached out to me this year because they're in the same boat we are. Their middle school, for the first time this year, is implementing Amplify. And their elementary school does not have, their elementary schools do not have a resource. So they're looking for one. And they're looking at getting next-gen into their elementary schools. So they reached out to me to collaborate with our pilots, see what they're learning and what we're learning. So that's what we're looking for today.
Go ahead.
So Madam Chair, I guess we're asking for the support of the board with two things tonight for science. One, adoption of the NGSS-aligned scope and sequence, K-5, number one. And number two, the ability to expand the science pilot to include these two other resources and collaboration with other science coaches.
Okay, good. I have a question about the pilot, the Amplify. Can we expand that to more than three teachers? I think there are nineteen teachers in the pilot. We're using Amplify in middle school. And I think to have a robust pilot, I would, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that I would like to see more than three teachers in that pilot.
We certainly could. We were looking at, I guess, a timeframe, you know, shorter timeframe. So I guess that's why we chose just three different units to look at.
I mean, if you had three units, you could even put two or three teachers at each one. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, part of it too is the, a little bit of training is involved with Amplify in learning a little bit of the next-gen pedagogy because that is part, you know, that is what Amplify Science is about and PhD Science as well, utilizing that pedagogy. So the science teachers, those teachers would need a lot of support and a lot of, a little bit of training beforehand.
Dr. McKinney?
I think, I don't have the original motion, but it's not just a pilot. I think, I mean, I don't have the original motion, but it's not just a pilot, a trial, but this is also an effort to look at what quality programs are out there and what are the best that might fit our needs. So it may not be at the recommendation at the end of this pilot that we go with one particular program. It might be an extended pilot going into next year and expanding it so there are more teachers. Certainly, there are teachers who are excited about Mystery Science. There are others that have some reservations about the quality of the product and some of the other pieces that are in there. So I hope that clarifies where we are in the process.
Mrs. Raymond?
I guess I'm struggling to see the benefit of having only three teachers do Amplify this year, if there's the idea of expanding it to more teachers next year. Because basically what we're saying is one teacher for K, one teacher for four, and one teacher for five. And say they hate it, then they're not going to recommend that we go forward. If they love it, they're going to recommend we go forward. So either way, we need to expand it, right? So I guess I just, I'm having trouble seeing the benefit, and I'm wondering if it, if we can't support more teachers, then maybe it ought to wait until next year. And I'm also curious about the cost of piloting both of those, because it sounds like you'd like a motion to expand the pilot to both Amplify and potentially PhD and the collaboration. So if we were to do that, like what's the cost to the district? Is it within the current budget? And could we fit more teachers in with the support that they needed under the current budget, or should we wait until February? That was a bunch.
Okay.
No, it's okay. The Mystery Science pilot this year is free. The Amplify Science and the materials and kits is free. I don't believe there's a cost for PhD Science. The minor cost has been maybe $2,000 to $3,000 in supplies or materials that are hands-on, disposable materials that would be needed for some of the hands-on science experiments. So it's not a huge cost. I think we're just looking to find the best resource. I hear what you're saying about expanding it and having more teachers. It's kind of challenging to do that in the middle of the year, once things have started. I think we want to look at, see, Mystery Science could be a resource, maybe K-2 down the road, but it certainly would be helpful to have a similar resource like Amplify, grades three to five, and help transition to the middle school. So we want to be able to make those sort of decisions with a broader scope and collect more information, and certainly collaborate with districts that are in a similar place. So...
So I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support piloting multiple resources. I think that that is the best way to do pilots with fidelity. But having said that, I think the sample size is too small. So when we're talking about next-gen science standards and, you know, teaching kids about science, I think we ought to need to some vertical alignment here. And if you're going to conduct an experiment, you need a sample size that will give you results that are reliable. And in this case, absolutely no negativity towards the three teachers who would be piloting it. Three teachers, one on each level, is not a good sample size. It's not a representative sample size, and it's not one that could give us results with fidelity, because you have personalities in play there. I wouldn't, honestly, I don't think we should pilot anything with less than like 19 or something, or, you know, at least 10, given the size of our district. So that's just, I hate to...
And I think I have in my mind the, the language arts pilot that we did, which was very comprehensive. It went on, it was, it was just a huge effort. And I think that the more, the more people you have participating in a pilot and able to discuss it, I think the more comfortable you feel with the choice, I would say. I think that I've heard from people, and I'm just, I'm just reporting, and I'm getting a small sample size, I don't have the huge sample size that she's referring to, but I think that there were just a few, there were two teachers who piloted for Amplify in the middle school. And I think that we want to be sure that we have more than that many piloting if we're looking to go into elementary. Because I think that that's been a concern that's been raised, that there were so few teachers, and that it was kind of a short pilot. It was May and June, I think. Was it a short pilot, the Amplify?
April, May.
April, May, which is kind of a short pilot. So we're not gonna, we're not going back over that. We're good, because we have our resource. But I think we want to learn from that pilot going forward to have a more robust process for elementary school.
Yeah, I agree completely.
Okay, Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. As a former first-grade teacher and second-grade teacher, the span between kindergarten and fourth grade is great. And I absolutely think you need for second and third grade in, in the pilot for Amplify I do have a question. The, one of the pamphlets we got, or stapled together, talks about teacher supports, and the first thing is weekly professional learning communities. I guess PLCs every week, is that just for science?
No, and that, it is specifically middle school. That doesn't happen at the elementary school level.
Oh, okay, okay. And they're given time for that? It doesn't take away time from the classroom?
No, they have...
Like at ten at elementary school?
Right. At the middle school level, they have two plans per day. One is a personal plan, and then the other plan is used for scheduled things like the PLCs or parent meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so to come back to our motion. So we, so why don't we do the scope and sequence one first then, because hopefully that's easy. So can it, just, I'm just, I'm brainstorming here. It's a safe space, and if I'm wrong, you can tell me, and my feelings will not be hurt. But when we, okay, I just want to do what's the right thing. So we're, we're having a scope and sequence before we have a pilot. So I know that we need something in the meantime, and we're using this now, but I guess I would maybe like some part of this motion to be that this would, this scope and sequence would have some place in the pilot to see how it, how they dovetail, how they go together, and that if there's any alignment between the two that has to happen, that that would happen, so that we don't have a separate scope and sequence and a separate resource that don't communicate with each other. I hope I'm explaining that well, but I don't know if anybody else has a comment on that. I'm doing a lot of the talking myself, and I...
So regardless of the, of the resource, the next-generation science standards are what's on the scope and sequence, and that's what we should be covering. So that's what, so if we were to adopt a resource that was missing part of it, I think we would need to supplement it, to breach the scope and sequence.
That would be one of the check things on the rubric. Do we need to supplement anything?
Right.
I just want that to be part of the process, because then that would be a good thing to consider before you start asking teachers to use a resource, and then they say, oh, we have to supplement here. It would, just to have it be part of the pilot process, I guess. Yeah? Dr. McKinnney?
So I think what we're trying to communicate is we'd like to adopt this scope and sequence in the order in which they are aligned to this next-gen. That subsequent document after this would be something, I think what you're saying of if it's whatever resource, to teach it in the following units, either as prescribed by the publisher or in a manner that's aligned to the next-gen, so that teachers are clear.
Yes.
These are the units you need to...
You said it way better than I did.
So yes, we can do that, because this isn't, just to clarify for the board, this isn't something we're going to put in teachers' hands and expect them to do tomorrow. This would be for the next school year.
Okay.
So then we would have some professional development around. We have 250 teachers that need some PD on next-gen science standards, along with the practices and the curriculum. So this would be kind of steps in a process towards next year in August.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna, pinky swear, you're gonna, that's gonna be good. Okay.
I didn't know we did that.
You know, okay, all right. Mrs. Oden?
I have one question. Have the teachers seen the scope and sequence? Have you asked for commentary back from the teachers?
It was the elementary teachers that created it. We had six elementary teachers from five different schools.
Right.
That created this document.
But did, did the, the bulk of the teachers make commentary on this?
No.
The bulk of the teachers are not completely familiar with next-gen science, so it would be unfair to share this with them without some sort of background knowledge and the four hours of time in PD that the curriculum writing team put together over the summer. So the goal is, if this is approved, our February in-service day, we're going to have grade-level teams review this and have the expectation around going into next year, along with communicating what would come out of the science pilot.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but certainly teachers in every grade understand what they're teaching for subjects now, what they're, what they're teaching in the curriculum. And I was just wondering how they feel about either changes, or is it close to what they're doing? I look at first grade, I'm familiar with that, and much of that is fairly familiar with what first grade has worked with. But I was just wondering about getting feedback from the people that are going to implement
I think we'll be getting feedback in the February in-service day, and I also would say that I would ask for the board's ongoing support in, you know, we're trying to make a comprehensive curriculum available to all students at all schools that include English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science. And I know there has been, you know, concern about kids reading on grade level and test scores, but we have to find a way that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum that all kids get. Because right now, there are times where we have kids that move throughout the district who may see the same science unit more than once. That's not fair to them and their experience. So we're trying to work with schedules and having continuity that all kids are getting science instruction, social studies instruction on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Raymond, do you have it?
No, I agree with what Dr. McKinnney just said.
Okay.
I think it's really important that as we have kids who move from school to school, that they have continuity of instruction, that they don't lose time or lose units. That's one of the things that they were talking about at the state level, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago, about how if a student moves from like Nashua to Merrimack or Merrimack to Nashua, like sometimes sixth grade, they're teaching different things at different grades, and they, you know, they can fall behind. And I remember that at DCYF with our foster kids. It was really challenging to keep kids from falling behind. Having said that, I don't know, I still, I want, I want our teachers to feel comfortable and have buy-in in what they're teaching, because I think that you can be more effective when you're enthusiastic about the material. So I want everyone to feel supported, so, so they can support our kids.
I agree too, and I think there's high support for the literacy pilot and the results of that, Lucy Cawkins, Great Minds, Eureka for math. I think this is one of those areas that is going to be somewhat of a challenge for teachers, in that when materials were taken away from them, now they're asking for a resource, we're providing, hopefully going to provide one. You may have to make some compromises on what you've used before, and you may have to go with the greater good. But the goal is, and we've been talking with the coaches around that February in-service of having grade levels come together and talk about what are the things that we're going to all commit to doing on a regular basis, and what are the must-dos and what are the fun-dos or can-dos that might kind of slide by the side, because you can't do everything.
No.
There's not enough time, so we're going to have to prioritize some of these things, particularly in the upper grades, the fourth and fifth grade, where you see more schools departmentalize and have specialty. I would hope for the board's support in, particularly in those grades, around the state assessment and moving our instruction so it's aligned with the assessment that's being delivered to kids. So I understand the concerns around the number of teachers. I'm happy to come back at another time and recruit more teachers to be a part of that. I think at the younger late grades, I was never really a great science teacher, but I think I could teach kindergarten science, and I think they're pretty solid with that. The upper levels, I certainly think it becomes more challenging. So I would just hope you consider all of those things in the end. Thank you. Sorry about my call.
Okay, Mrs. Oden?
I just wanted to clarify. I wasn't looking for each teacher to choose what they wanted to do. I would just like to get feedback from them as to what they thought of this scope and sequence. That's, that's what I was referring to. I don't, we, we've had problems in the district for, well, we had, back when I was teaching. I've been gone for six years now, but, I mean, you'd get a kid from another school, and they had no idea what you were talking about in some area. And we do need some consistency in that. So that wasn't what I was referring to, but here we are as a board not using this, and we're, we're being presented, and I certainly think the people that are going to be teaching this, it'd be nice for them to see what's in, what's, what could be coming. So that's where I was going with that.
Right. Yeah, I agree with Ms. Oden on that. I'm concerned about, well, it's lucky, because this committee has two former educators, but if we look at the board as a whole, I mean, this looks great to me, but I don't have a frame of reference for it. You know, so I am concerned about the idea of the board choosing something without that greater feedback, because I feel like we're just being like, you have to teach it this way. And, because everything you guys have said, I'm like, wow, this is fantastic. We should definitely do this. But again, I don't have that background to know really, to evaluate it as well as I would like. So I just, I don't know, I'm hesitant. I feel like it's almost premature, but I don't vote tonight, so I should probably stop talking.
I just want to clarify that the, the board has adopted the next-gen science standards. Those standards are in use at the middle school level. So this document would give us the impetus to move forward at the elementary level in an organized and strategic way.
Oh, okay.
So that's step one of just having the ability to communicate to elementary teachers, there are new standards, here they are, and this is the order in which we're going to teach them with whatever resource comes down the road. So this is kind of like a sneak preview of something that's coming six or eight months down the road. So I hope that helps. We're just trying to align our curriculum K-8, because right now, we're not aligned to this at the elementary level, sorry, this document here in terms of next-gen. We're still working off old UBDs that Mrs. Porter was referencing earlier. So we're trying to move that curriculum forward.
Thank you. That gives me a better understanding.
So the UBD units are what are being used to teach these now?
The dated ones, yes.
Yes, okay.
So we need to do this, update those, or have that curriculum document.
That's a huge amount of work.
Yes, but we can do it.
Oh, I know you can do it. I know you can do it. Okay. Again, we're just asking, because we want the best. We know you want the best, and we, it's just, we just want to understand when we're voting on something, because, you know, that's our due diligence. Okay, so this...
Another one.
Okay, Mrs. Oden?
When you said six to eight months, six months is April. So what would you be giving the elementary teachers in April?
Well, I wasn't exactly counting the months. I was thinking...
I did.
February, February, we're definitely having grade level in meetings during the in-service day. So this would be a conversation we would have with them.
Okay.
And then, not, nothing in their hand would be this and an overview of the next-gen and a snapshot around what are the next-gen science practices. We had a number of teachers that went through the next-gen science training. That was like a three or four-day training. Okay, great, five-day training. How to replicate that with 250 teachers is a little daunting. So we're trying to roll out some of this over time. In terms of curriculum materials, you know, depending on the pilot, if we could have materials for them in a year or two, that would be ideal, but we're not there yet. In the meantime, if we were aligned to this, we could do some internal kind of horizontal and vertical alignment and using some of the existing UBDs and put them in a correct
Back when I was teaching, when we went to professional development, there would be a form at the end of the meeting that you would fill out... be a form at the end of the meeting that you would fill out, was this helpful, what was the strength? Can we ask the teachers for feedback that way on this, you know, just to get some feedback? I would, you know, I'm looking at this, for me, you know, I haven't taught some of these grades, but I just would like to know how our teachers feel about the scope and sequence of this, if they have concerns about it. I think maybe if we had heard from teachers at the middle school who were more familiar, we would have heard the concerns about Chromebooks. That is a big problem at the middle school. And I don't think, as board members, we realized that was going to be such a big issue. So I don't think it hurts to get feedback, and these are the people that are going to be teaching this and following this, and I would just like to hear, for me, it would make me feel better, this makes a whole lot of sense to me. That's what I would like to see, our teachers having a look at this and at least giving us some feedback. That's where I'm coming from.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
So what kind of feedback are you referring to? Because I'm, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding that if they don't like the topics, you mean, at each grade level?
No, I don't think it's, I would think it matches up pretty much with what they're doing now.
So those are written from the next-gen science standards, which are grade-specific. So everything that's written in there for grade one are in the next-gen science standards for grade one. So if we were to move something, we would be not aligned with the next-gen science standard.
I think what she's saying is you're moving the UBD units here. So like, what I'm used to teaching in fifth grade-
Right.
-might move to fourth grade, which did happen.
Right.
So it moved to third grade. The Owl unit, remember, we used to do the Owl pellets?
It was in third grade.
And it was in third grade. I'm over it. But, because we loved that. I think that's what she's referring to. So and I would think the feedback would give you, because I understand that these are the next-gen, so they have to be that. So the feedback is not, I don't agree with next-gen. The feedback is maybe what I need to move forward to be able to do that. Or where I am in my progression type of thing, just kind of a finger on the pulse of, you know what I mean, is where people are and-
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, because this is what it is. You can't change the next-gen, because-
Right.
-that is a thing. But I, in my learning journey, where am I towards getting to that, I guess?
Thank you.
Right? Okay. Mrs. Raymond?
Very quickly, to make sure that I understand, the SAS testing is aligned with the next-gen. So we kind of, in order to prepare our students, and we should not be teaching to a test, let me be very clear, and I think standardized tests have some institutionalized unfairness. But having said that, it seems silly to not prepare our children for tests, so, or deliberately not. So were we not to approve this, we wouldn't be able to move forward towards making sure our kids have the skills they need according to the state standards, right?
Right, and I don't think we're discussing whether to approve it or not, we're just trying to understand it. I never had in my mind that we wouldn't.
Okay.
I was just looking to see functionally what that would look like on the ground from the teacher's point of view. I guess that's it, because, I mean, so that's a different thing. Just, you know, again, having concern for success, building what we need to be successful. And I think that, as Mrs. Oden was saying, that constant dialogue with teachers is a fundamental building block of success. And we just want to, I'm not saying you don't do that, but we just want to understand that that's like an integral part of the process going forward, so that when we get to choosing something, we've kind of front-loaded that work, so that all of that discussion between the program and this is happening before the implementation of a new program so that it will help it to go more smoothly. So I guess we're just talking about building in some of those conversations to the pilot process, so that's worked out, and, you know, when it's rolled out, it would be smooth, right? Okay. All right. So, do you have anything, Mrs.? Okay. Okay, so the motion is to accept the K-5 science scope and sequence NGSS aligned to 2019 as presented. Is that good? Okay, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. You want to take the roll? Okay, reread the motion, reread. Okay, so we're going to, this title of this, so we're going to accept that title as presented.
Accept the K-through-five science scope and sequence aligned with the NGSS 2019.
Yes. Yes, to write it down. Mrs. Raymond, do we need a motion to go longer, or are we all, no, okay.
I think, do you have consensus on your committee to continue your meeting?
You can go on.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, you're the chair.
I, well, I have to-
You know what's great about-
I can't have consensus with me.
Having everyone physically present is that you can do the aye votes-
Okay.
-and take consensus.
Okay, can we keep going?
It's nice to read the room that way.
Yes, Mrs. Oden, can we keep going? Okay. We're good. I'm sorry to keep you late, I know it's a school night and I'm sorry. This is why we start at 5:30, so that the kids can come and they can go, we can do our thing, and you can still get home before bedtime, although it's very dark out. Okay. All right, so on the motion, you're going-
To accept the K-through-five science scope and sequence for the NGSS aligned 2019.
Do we take a roll call?
Roll call.
We don't need a roll call, okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Abstained? We're good, okay. You're good. Passes unanimously. I know, I'm so used to doing the roll call with somebody on the phone. Okay. Next. I've lost my agenda. So we need a motion for the pilot next, is that what we're doing next? Okay. So in the motion, do we say how many teachers, or how specific do you want the motion to be?
Madam Chair, I'd ask that the board consider amending the motion to include a review of PhD science and Amplify and come with a recommendation to the board no later than the spring of 2020. Actually, can I amend my own motion? I can't even make a motion.
No, we're collaboratively here.
I guess the goal is, we just want to have the flexibility to look at other programs aside from mystery science.
Okay.
And I'm not saying we want to come with something in hand, but we certainly want to be able to evaluate and come to consensus around, here's one or two quality resources that we'd like the board to consider.
So your recommendation in the spring of 2020 is not going to be for adoption, it's going to be, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, let's go backwards.
Okay, thank you.
I'd ask the board to consider amending the previous motion for the mystery science pilot to possibly include two more resources.
And the number of teachers who participate is not part of the motion?
No, but I definitely hear the board's concern around a sample size, so I'm happy to report back around the number of teachers and work to recruit more, so we have-
Okay.
-a sizable sample that represents the number of teachers.
Okay, so that would be for mystery science, Amplify, and PhD. We would have a good sample size for each of those programs?
Mm-hmm.
Resources?
And the collaboration, right?
I don't know how to quantify that, but certainly if we're able to report back to the board that we've been collaborating with other districts and hearing what the resources are out there, can that be part of our considerations or deliberations too?
So that collaboration would be their research into mystery, Amplify, and PhD, and also if there's something else that Nashua should look at? Is that what you're saying? What is that collaboration exactly? What does that look like and sound like?
So they are also in the same exact position that we're in, they're implementing Amplify six to eight, and they are looking for a resource for elementary just the same way that we are.
Okay.
And right now, they're piloting PhD and Amplify. And so they're not piloting mystery science. They wanted to look at our mystery science pilot, and they're a smaller district than us, obviously, so, and they're willing to share their pilot experiences. They're doing, I believe, an entire grade level, which is about four or five teachers for each of those.
Would our teachers be meeting with their teachers?
I would be meeting with the elementary coaches.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Although those teachers are not our teachers, I think teachers who are piloting something in general make an effort to do so with fidelity. And so I like the idea of this collaboration in that it expands our sample size. Does that make sense? So instead of, we may only have a handful of teachers here, but if we can get the information from their teachers, now we have two handfuls of teachers, and that's, to me, I think that that's okay, as long as we take into consideration some demographic differences. But Salem is somewhat similar to Nashua. So, you know, that actually makes me feel better. I still think thirty teachers is too little, but it makes me feel better. Ms. Oden is giving me a look like she disagrees.
No, no. I'm the one that's supposed to write the motion, and I'm just really confused.
Could the motion be-
We need it clear.
So we're going to, the motion is to amend the elementary silence, silence, the science pilot, right, to include Amplify, right? PhD, Amplify Science, PhD Science, and a collaboration with the Salem School District, right? Okay. Oh, no, and then to be reported back in the spring of 2020, isn't that what you said?
I don't, I wouldn't put that in.
Okay, good. All right.
Let's give the teachers the time that they need.
Okay.
And then we can check in with Dr. McKenney in the spring, and then we'll check in again.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. We only have good intentions. Okay, do you want to-
I think I'm missing something. Amend the elementary science, mystery science-
No, the elementary science pilot.
Pilot.
To include-
To include, thank you, mystery science, Amplify Science, and PhD Science, and work collaboratively with the Salem School District.
Period, right?
And what were they piloting?
And a collaboration with the Salem School District.
Okay.
Does that make it better?
Yeah.
And- A collaboration, okay, with the Salem School District.
Do you want to read it again?
Amend the elementary science pilot to include mystery science, Amplify Science, and PhD Science, and work-
And a collaboration with-
And work and-
No work.
No work, just and a collaboration with-
And a collaboration with the Salem School District.
Yes. Good? Okay.
Well, Jackie.
All right. All right, here we go. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll tell Jackie when she calls me tomorrow.
I'm going to raise it again.
I mean, we can do a roll call, it's quick. Okay. Okay, so do you want to-
Amplify.
Sure.
Update?
Yep.
So the beginning of this school year, we implemented Amplify Science, grades six, seven, and eight. We collaborated very closely with Amplify. Our Nashua IT department was with them probably the first month and a half, working very closely to iron out any issues with mostly teachers being able to log in. The students didn't have any trouble logging in. We did have a few teachers that had some difficulty, and we supplemented that for them. Once the Ed Council had met this fall, there were some concerns that were brought forth, and Mrs. Fitzpatrick responded to those in an email. So hopefully the next time that the Ed Council does meet, that those concerns will be addressed. The pacing that we're at right now, we have 25 teachers at the middle school level. Everyone has finished the initial unit, it was called a launch unit, it was shorter than the traditional core units. It was getting everybody sort of up to speed. And most of them have started their second unit, which is a longer unit, it's considered a core unit. There's much more content and opportunities for students to engage in the science practices. So we are getting feedback from them on a weekly basis. This wasn't part of the slides that you had, if you could just take one and pass it on, I'll bring one to Mrs. Raymond.
Oh, thank you.
So these are a summary of some of the student comments about Amplify that had come through. Some of them are slightly paraphrased as there were a number of comments that were very similar, so they were just sort of grouped together. You can see that it ranges from one end of the spectrum to the other. They like the way that they can access the lessons, it's very intuitive and easy to use, that they can access it from anywhere. Where some students actually said they were challenged by questions, other students said, well, questions were vague and difficult to understand. And, you know, from an educator's point of view, it was like, well, that's almost the same thing, but it was certainly in a different vein. Many liked being able to use the computer and being able to use paper and pencil. Some of them liked the idea that it was saving paper. But then again, we had students that said that they would like to use paper more and the computer less. They enjoyed the visual, hands-on activities, and they did like the narration tool that Monica had mentioned earlier. The simulations are really a learning experience. Some thought that it was a little confusing, but once they got the gist of it, so there was a learning curve there, not only for the teachers, but also for the students. They liked that they can update the work, you can read the rest. My favorite is the very last one, it says, "I may not be the biggest fan of Amplify, but it's doing a great job with difficult content." There are teacher supports there. They have the opportunity to meet at their schools with grade-level teachers teaching science, to have those discussions, whether it's about grading or student work, or how to modify something for the students, or adding pieces that can help the students learn a little bit better. I am in the classroom, I have been in the classroom more this year than I have in the past four years in this position, and I am absolutely loving that. I do enjoy the conversations that I have with teachers after that debriefing piece, I think that's very, very important. There are office hours, I'm at each school one morning a week before school where teachers can drop in. I've had teachers- one morning a week before school where teachers can drop in. I've had teachers drop in to organize their kits. I've had them come in to talk about grading. Um, I actually had a, a teacher ask if I could be in her classroom that day and, you know, I canceled a few other little things and I was in her classroom all day that, that day. Um, they have a newsletter, letter that they get monthly. I believe you have a copy of that in your packet. They have received a second newsletter since then. There was one at the end of October. Something that's referenced in that newsletter is the Amplify Facebook page. I think our Villa had mentioned it when she was speaking. That gives these teachers support outside our own district. Um, there are new teachers that have challenges and they put those questions out there. There are teachers that have been using Amplify for two, two to three years or more, and they are a wonderful source of support, as well as Amplify themselves. Um, the moderators are in there on a regular basis, and it's great. Teachers actually upload videos of students engaging in some of the activities. So as a teacher says, "Well, I'm not sure how this is going to work out in my classroom," they go onto that Facebook page and they'll say, "Oh, wow, you know, I, I can actually see real students at that age level working at something." They're certainly welcome to email, text, um, or phone me at any time, and we do have department meetings set up. These are the department meetings. The ones highlighted in yellow have already happened. It's hard to see because it's over on the left-hand side, but they will be meeting every single month except for the month of January and June. And this was based on feedback from the teachers. Um, and I believe you had mentioned it yourself, that, you know, they really need time to get together and have those discussions and ask other teachers how they worked with something in their own classroom. So we're hoping that this is going to give them the opportunity to do that. One of those meetings was on October 23rd. We actually had education specialists come in from Amplify and all 25 teachers attended. It was an all-day in-service for them. Um, you were talking about exit slips at the end of a PD session. We gave an exit slip at the end. Two-thirds of the teachers had said that yes, it was a productive day. One-third had said, no, it wasn't. Um, most of that was, they, they felt like they had learned enough about Amplify because they had been using it for about a month. But two-thirds of those teachers that had said no actually said that the day was productive because they had the opportunity to meet with their colleagues. They did have some working time together during that day so that they could ask each other questions about that. Um, overall, I think it really was a productive day. That wasn't their first PD experience. They also had a, sort of a drive-by mechanics type of PD in September, soon after school opened, so that they would be able to utilize Amplify in their classroom. From that exit slip, the teachers suggested, um, for next steps, that they do have the opportunity to work in grade-level teams. Um, they wanted to be able to share successes and challenges. They wanted to work directly on grade-level units. So once again, as Mrs. Porter had mentioned, you know, actually being able to delve into them and work with their colleagues on that. One of the other suggestions, Amplify, it's, you can't just give the student a worksheet and tell them to go read pages 35 to 37 and say, "You've done everything that you need to do." Um, it's very important for students to be in the classroom. So teachers wanted to get together to be able to share and think of strategies that they can put in place for students that aren't able to be in the class when they're having classroom discussions or having debates, such as, um, Mrs. Lennon had mentioned, that that's a large part of the curriculum. That is a quick update on Amplify at the middle school level. Um, and if you have any questions, I will gladly field those.
No, go ahead.
Okay, on the student comment?
Your microphone.
It doesn't come? Oh, sorry.
On the student's comment, sorry, Jim. Um, it says, "Doesn't save work if work isn't submitted." So if they haven't finished their work and they can't save it, can they send it to a portal or to an email address or somewhere? It seems sad to be able to do work and you can't save it any kind of way.
In the past, in situations like that, teachers have asked kids to copy and paste it into a Google Doc.
Okay.
So that they could go back and that they could actually put it back on. I have a feeling that that very well could have been a, you know, they went through the trouble of typing up a paragraph or so and didn't submit or, um, weren't finished to submit and then found out that it wasn't there after. So that's more of a, um, user issue of, if you're not going to hit submit, please make sure you copy that into a Google Doc.
Okay, so I, um, on the board, we like to be, uh, kind of action-oriented. What are the specifics that we can do to help this to be successful? So in listening to all of the comments and, and things that I've heard, I think that we, we need to, as a board, address some financial, um, solutions into this for Chromebook carts.
Yes.
Um, we need, um, in, in order to do that, I, I think it would be helpful to have a computer inventory of the middle schools. So, um, you know, basing on what I've heard here, not only how many, uh, Chromebooks are available, but what are the, what's the usage demand on them? Because you have, you know, every subject area needs them. What, plus the testing time. So I guess, in a perfect world, each science teacher would have their own Chromebook cart, right, in middle school? And a Chromebook cart of 30, ideally? So I don't, I don't have any idea how many carts that would be or how much money that would be.
It's about $178,000. If you wanted a two-to-one ratio, it's about $90,000.
So two, two-to-one is about $90,000. That's just for science.
That would just be covering the science teachers. So
Just science.
We would have enough carts at each middle school where, um, two teachers could share a cart of 30.
So when you're saying two-to-one, you're two teachers, not two kids on a laptop?
It would end up being two kids on a laptop as well, because if it's a cart of 30, then one teacher could use 15 of them and the other teacher could use 15 of them.
Except on, on assessment days.
On an assessment day, so, you know, they would have to stagger or.
Right. So the first number you said was 170?
I want to say it, it's, it's less than doubling the 90,000.
Okay.
The 90,000 is more in my memory.
Okay.
Um, it's basically $231 times 30 times 25.
Wait a minute, 231 times 20?
30.
Times, what, times 30?
Times 25.
Times 25.
And that is only to get sufficient Chromebooks for science classes and not to have a Chromebook for like every student or anything like that. It's just to have a Chromebook for every student while they're in science class. Um, but then we have the StudySync issue. And I guess my question is, going back to Ms. Porter's question about a computer inventory, if we were to hypothetically come up with magical funds to purchase, um, you know, whatever this comes out to, you know, $200,000 worth of Chromebooks, if we were able to do that, how, how would that affect the StudySync? Do you know what I mean? And I'm sure social studies and other people like to use them too. Um, just so that we have the information that we know, so that we're not minimized. Like, I hate to, to purchase exactly what we need for right now at the minimum level. I'd rather know what like, you know what I mean, a contingency would be. And the, you know, the other question I have is, it's a, and it's an IT question, is if we were to be able to take some of those state funds that we anticipate coming to us sometime around Christmas time, like a present, um, to do this, and, and I don't know, um, what are the ancillary costs associated with it? Does IT believe that we could have an additional, uh, 30 times 25 Chromebooks operating simultaneously and still manage to have them all connect to the, to our internet?
Go ahead.
I think it might be helpful, um, if we bring, um, an update from the Technology Committee, because they're working to develop a technology plan, and they have been working on some of those things in terms of the inventory at all the schools, the access points, the capacity.
Oh, good, good, good.
That's great.
If we can reach out, um, I can do that at the next meeting.
I mean, it's my intention, so we're talking about this, this money from the state. The aldermen have to do a number of motions before it would come to us. Um, and then we would need to schedule special budget committee meetings. Um, but my hope is that as we schedule those budget committee meetings, we would get presentations from IT and, you know, whomever else the superintendent lines up for us. Um, but it's good to have these kinds of questions prepared so that we're not scrambling. I mean, I think there's a, I could spend more than a million dollars.
Easily.
Easily.
Um, would it be possible to also have a price quote for teacher manuals? Um, because if it's a, we've adopted it for seven years. So it might be a good investment in the beginning, just to let those teachers have them. They'll be in color, they'll be bound, they won't be falling out of a binder. It'll just be, um, a good foundation for them. So, and I don't know. I know that we don't want to go on the cheap, but we only have so much money. So I don't know if it would be, you know, maybe a quote for each teacher to have their own teacher guide or maybe for a grade level. I, you know, I don't know how you can figure that out just to have.
I can certainly reach out to Amplify and, and get numbers for that. Once we do purchase them, um, as things change, it's easy to have it changed online and have teachers just print out the new changes. Once you have something that is bound, then the, there could be additions, you know, two, three, four years down the road where that original manual wouldn't work. As a matter of fact, when we gave them the, um, the documentation for their first lesson and we printed out a teacher version for it, they had actually added more hands-on activities for this year. And those weren't included in the manual that we had printed out. So if we had purchased the manuals last year, they, they wouldn't have been up to date. But I certainly will get those numbers for you. That's certainly a discussion.
I'm just trying to reach a good, a good
Yeah.
medium point here between nothing and it.
Absolutely.
There has to be maybe some in-between point
Mm-hmm.
where we can have a tangible manual, but still keeping, keep updating.
And maybe we could just add the sheets to them, you know, that, those, those pieces. But I can get those numbers, certainly.
Um, and for the, the student books, ju- you know, while we're, we're just going to consider everything, but I, I know that the, um, you know, it was mentioned, the, the load on the copiers, um, having copy volunteers not wanting to come back because there's so much to do and that, you know, and that there are paper budget and the, you know, so is, is that something we could look into? Because it's kind of like a pay me now, pay me later, right? You're either paying for the student books or you're paying all those other costs that are coming out of someplace else.
That's something else that I can certainly do. I also think that we should ask the individual teachers what their preference is. One of the reasons we weren't going to do that is we had so many student workbooks left over from our pilots that weren't utilized.
Okay.
And I would hate to see money going out and then having it sit in boxes.
So maybe now that they've started?
They might have a much better idea.
They might have a better idea.
Absolutely.
Do I need that or do I not need that?
Yes, we, we could probably do, do a form, like a Google form, and we could actually get that.
Perfect, Ms. Oden.
Uh, we had that issue at the elementary, uh, program with math. And I believe Katie, Katie Sad was here and she went to a printer. They, they, um, decided which pages most teachers used. I think they got input from the teachers and they went out to a printer and saved money. I don't know how much, but they handled it that way. So maybe that's something that would, would help out because I know the frustration of going down to a printer and want 25 copies and it's not running. It, it's frustrating. So, um, and we're going to spend the money on copying and paper or we're going to spend the money to print it and, you know, it's there and they don't have to do it. So that, that might be a worthwhile, uh, way to go.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion. I'd actually prepped the first lesson in the metabolism unit myself and I used one sheet. Out of all the pages that went with that first lesson, I used one sheet because it already had data tables all set up for the kids. Um, so I think that's a very valid way to go.
Um, is there a replacement budget for, um, materials that get broken or? Because I know that, you know, you have, there was kits and manipulatives to go with that and kids, I mean, they break. Is there, how do teachers replace those?
So for the consumable pieces, each school has a science budget, which is overseen by their curriculum liaison.
Okay.
So, and they were told at the beginning that any of those consumables would come out of that budget. We had a few things, um, that broke, I think, with the physical science, um, kit in the very first unit. And I reached out to Amplify and they are going to replace those at no charge.
Okay, very good. So given that, that this, this computer part really is kind of troubling and I'm concerned about teachers who are, um, being told that they have to implement something with fidelity when they don't have the computers. I think that's a, I would feel a lot of stress. Is there a way to kind of, um, I, I don't know, to kind of, have you heard that? Are you hearing that people are having a hard time? And, and is there a way to kind of maybe relax things until we can come up with a solution to get some? I, I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm just saying, you know, um, do your best and, and, and kind of, you know, learn the program and, uh, we're going to try to work on getting you some Chromebooks so that you can have what you need.
And, um, an email did go out from me to people appreciating the, uh, extra work that goes into implementing a new program and that there would be bumps along the way, but that we were moving forward with Amplify and people, the expectation is that people are going to implement it and that they would rely on support from the coach and, um, we would help in any way possible. I do know that not everything has to be done on the computer, and I agree, we could use more Chromebooks. But I don't think it's an excuse not to implement the program.
Well, I wouldn't say teachers are using excuses.
No, I'm just saying in general. I wasn't saying teachers. I'm just saying
Okay.
in general.
I think, because I, you know.
And can I just say that I know that some people, I know that there are people that are struggling. On the other hand, yesterday, um, when the professional development was happening, I had several teachers actually seek, actually seek me out. And at one point I was walking down the hall from one workshop to the next and they said, "Hey, we were just talking about you." And I said, "Uh-oh." And they were, and they then told me, you know, "We had our reservations about Amplify, but boy, is it a great program." And giving me individual stories. And, um, at another, at another workshop, a person came up to me when they were working on activity and said, "I just want you to know how much I love Amplify." Now, I'm not, you know, crazy. I know that people that are dissatisfied aren't going to seek me out as much. However, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from people. And so I know that we have our challenges, but I think we just started implementation of a new program that teaches, the pedagogy is very different. And I think that that's part of the challenge is it's very, it's a very different way of teaching. So I appreciate all the work that people are doing because I know that this is, it's challenging on many levels. Um, but I just want to report that I'm getting a lot of positive feedback.
I am glad to hear that. I, I, I guess just as board members, we want to be sure that we're supplying teachers with what they need to be successful, so.
And I really do want to thank you on behalf of the teachers. Um, having the Chromebooks certainly would make things much easier. Um, there are modeling tools. There are modeling tools on there that can, you can use the Chromebook. They can also have them model not on a computer. They've been given the professional development where they've been shown how students can model on large whiteboards or large pieces of poster paper, or if they wanted individual assessments of the students just on pieces of paper. And I've worked with some teachers where we take a screenshot of the model that's on the computer, and that sort of scaffolds it for the students, and then they draw in the other pieces as opposed to clicking and dragging something. But I absolutely agree, having Chromebooks would make it so much easier for the teachers.
Those simulations are interactive, right? And they're adaptive, I think.
And there are two different things. There are simulations which you absolutely need the Chromebooks for, unless it happens to be sometimes with a physical science simulation. You can actually do a hands-on lab that gets the students to the same learning target.
Okay.
But the other piece were modeling tools, which students can model by hand, they don't necessarily. But I absolutely agree, I think it would make it much easier for them if they had the Chromebooks.
Okay.
There are ways to get around some of the things, but it does mean much more work for the teachers. So I can see why that they would want that.
Which is what our concern is, right? It's just more work for the teachers and to make it more fun for the kids. Okay. All right. Thank you again for your patience. All right, so are we done with Amplify then? Okay. Yes? Because we, I know we have a couple more motions, but that's... Pardon me? Sure, 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 sure.
I appreciate you letting me do this so that I can sneak out a few minutes early. The middle school, high school has started. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And we can touch base tomorrow. Oh, no, we're not. That's right.
I apologize. We have started a secondary newsletter for curriculum, just to let people know what's going on both at middle school and high school level. The middle school coaches have been helping with their subject areas, and the high school department heads are sharing information. This has been in the iNews, but also I sent it out to the principals additionally and have them share it with their faculties and staff. And so this, the first one, although it was ready early in October, for a variety of reasons, it went out the end of October. And so I'm going to be doing the end of the month, and I believe Dr. McKinney does the beginning of the month, right? Oh, okay, we're both doing end of the month. For some reason, I thought you were on the same page. Look at that. So I just wanted to let you know that that's additional information that's going out to all the teachers about what's happening in all the different subject areas and different grade levels. And part of the middle school, high school piece is because we are current, we're actively working on vertical alignment, and we have been for a while. So this is just a way to keep people in the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is, is it called Curriculum Newsletter or Curriculum Chronicle?
Yeah, I couldn't come up with anything.
Well, no, is it the, it's a curriculum chron...
That's trademarked.
That's his. No, I was trying to come up with something creative and just...
Curriculum Chronicle. Oh, you have one for me?
Oh, okay, all right. Shit, he's laughing at me.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Does it go out to the, I know it's in iNews, but would it...
It's not in your...
Would it go out to the parents at all? It's just in, on iNews? Because I read that, and I thought it was very good.
You know what? I didn't think about that, this, but there's no reason that can't happen, so I will make sure that that step gets included. But I initially was really interested in making sure that the staff knew what was going on in the different subject areas, six through 12. But I appreciate your suggestion, and I will make that happen.
Yeah. Thought it was good.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Very good. All right. My papers. Have a good day.
Bye.
Thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow, whatever the case may be.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
The last three things in your packets are informational. One is the Curriculum Chronicle newsletter for elementary. This is from the end of October, speaks to the October early release, which was building based, some work that we're doing for competency-based education, November in-service, which I'll speak to in a minute, tech tips from our technology coach. Our science and math coaches helped write those two sections. Social-emotional learning, Ms. Okunak over at Maine Dunstable contributed this part here, and Ms. Murray helped with the literacy portion here as well. Can I speak to these other two pieces and come back to that? The next piece in your packet is the paraprofessional press. This year, I'm working to meet with a paracabinet, which has a paraprofessional representative from all the 17 schools to go over professional development, communication, and certification. So we met for the first time on the early release day. We're meeting again, I think, in mid-November. They're a great group, and they're just helping spread the information and trying to bring some quality professional learning for all the paras that are in the district, and they're a busy group. So they've kind of volunteered to be the point persons for their building, and they've been a great help. So they're surveying their buildings for the next meeting of what are some workshops that we can deliver free from the AFT for them. So that's exciting.
So does this go out every month, too?
This will go out three times a year.
Three times a year?
Yes.
Okay, very nice.
And then lastly, we just had our November in-service day. We had secondary at North, elementary at South. This is our choice day, so educators have a choice of either going to workshops, submitting a personalized learning plan, or doing a little bit of both. So this gives you an overview of the topics. We also had the AFT here that gave a bunch of four different workshops, were, had great attendance and great reviews as well. And we also, I don't know if you recall, in the budget process last year, utilized Frontline for, and teachers were happy with that, and used the app to sign up for their workshops and get notifications. So that was a good day. Any questions on those two, or can I go back to this?
Why do we have questions on the workshops open to the board members or not?
We didn't have any board members. We had a number of community members.
Oh, okay, so anybody...
Justin Monroe was there from Groh Nashua. A lot of people went to see Scarlett Lewis at Choose Love Nashua. Greater Health, Mental Health was there presenting. There were presentations on vaping from some community organizers, so we had a bunch.
Probably would have loved it all. I think my daughter did that. She worked at Nashua Mental Health.
Oh, she could have been there.
Yeah.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
So lastly, in the Curriculum Chronicle, we spoke about literacy and I'm asking for the board's support in doing two things tonight. One would be considering amending the previous motion around the literacy pilot. I like to be able to provide teachers with the interactive read-aloud kits. They go with the mini lessons. Each grade level team would get one to two interactive read-aloud kits, which would give them about over 100 books that they could use for modeling the mini lessons. They're great picture books. So sort of, we talked about implementation in curriculum tonight, so they have the teacher's manual, if you will, the reading mini lessons. But when it says you need to use X book to use this mini lesson, these kits would give the teachers the book in hand to deliver that mini lesson. So that would be one thing. And then the other would be amending the previous motion so that we could move forward with purchasing these materials as funds become available, like the funds from the state or other things, so we can put them in the hands of teachers. So I ask for your consideration on those two things tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so I have this written down for you, Mrs. Oden, so you'll be able to just take this. Okay.
What is the cost? Oh, it's in the motion? Okay, thank you.
We, yeah, we're all set. We're good.
If you can email that to Jackie, too?
Yes.
And then that will help her from having to like strain to listen.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow, tonight or tomorrow. Okay, so the, we'll do the first one first. So we're going to move to amend the motion from May 28, 2019, to read as follows. To adopt the following resources for elementary literacy and grades K to five. Fountas and Pennell Classroom Guided Reading Collection, Fountas and Pennell Classroom Interactive Read-Aloud and Collection, Fundations and RAS Kids. So what that does is it affirms what were the results of the pilot, and that we're going to say that those are the resources we approve to be purchased, and then as we get funds, we'll come back to this motion and make those purchases. Does that make sense, right? Okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, abstained? All right.
Passes.
All right. So the second motion, it's that, right there. Okay. Poor Mrs. Oden.
You can do the second motion, you can do that one later. You got it.
I'll type that up and send it to Jackie. Oh, sorry. Okay, so the second one is a specific, so working off of that general one, we're going to come to a specific one to purchase the materials, which Dr. McKinney has gotten. He's done the research, and he has the purchase order that, right? Is that a, no, it's a quote, a quote? I'm sorry, a quote?
Yes.
Okay, after we do the motion, but, okay, so...
We have one quote?
We, pardon me?
No, we have several quotes. One quote?
Well, it's one company that has it. It's the only publisher that does that.
Just ass. Are you kidding me? Look at me like you could kill me. I'm like a...
Heinemann is like, they have it. They have it. So we are, a move to approve the purchase of Fountas and Pennell Interactive Read-Aloud Collections at a cost of $88,560 to be funded by account 91 dot 1 dot 992212 dot 61875. Can I have a second?
Second.
And the discussion is, I know that you said this is money that we have in the current curriculum budget. Okay, so we're not asking for additional money for this, it's coming out of the current curriculum budget. Okay? All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so that's that one. Okay.
Anything else, Doc McKinney?
It's been a marathon. You've been very patient.
You've got to go to work tomorrow.
I know. But look, we didn't start at 7:30, so like, I know, so we're good, right? We're good. Okay. All right, so move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All right, we're adjourned at 7:55. Thank you.
Great meeting.